Good evening. Wayne Westland Board of Education is now to come to order. We want to just say from the chair's position tonight that our board president, Brad Gray, is sick and not able to be with us. We wanted you to know and understand that. We're glad you're here tonight. It could be that we are over in the crowd and I'm going to instruct one of the secretaries, if you would, to count. Some of you may need to leave the room. All right, while that's happening. Okay. All right, we're going to delay that for a moment. Item 163.25, Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag. These guys are from Edison and we're going to talk about them in just a moment. Go ahead, folks.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Kids, if you'll wait right here. We have Fay Edwards. Fay Edwards, there you are. Fay is a fifth grader, fifth grade student at Edison Elementary. She is in Ms. Case class and has gone to Edison for the past two years. She has a brother and a sister. You don't fight, do you? You do, okay. You gotta love kids. They're great. Along with a dog and a lizard. Some of her hobbies include drawing and playing with her dog. Fay hopes to be an abstract artist when she grows up. Good job. Michaela Laurie. Michaela is a fifth grade student at Edison Elementary. She is in Ms. Brown's class and has attended Edison since kindergarten. She has a sister who attends Edison and a pet snake, which is a ball python. You don't put that in your sister's bed, do you? Although snakes scare some people, Michaela considers it job training as she hopes to be a reptile handler when she grows up. Good luck with that, Michaela. Sophie Gonzalez Perez. Sophie is a fifth grade student at Edison Elementary. She is in Ms. Brake's class and has been at Edison for three years. She has a brother, Joey, who attended Edison, Edison, but is now at the middle school. Sophie enjoys playing basketball, reading Harry Potter books, or watching movies. Sophie hopes to be a stunt double actress. Baby, go for the, go for the actress part, amen. Stunt doubles. Or any job in Hollywood because it would be cool. I do not, I do not have the certificates.
They're going to the school.
Okay. So let's give our students a great round of applause. Now I'm going to ask you, who did you bring with you tonight? Go. Your mom, where is she? There she is. All right. Who'd you bring?
My mom, my dad, and my brother.
All right, let's give them a. Thank you. And wait, just one more thing. Who else did you bring with you? Let's give him a good round of applause. Thank you. He can be seated. Item 164.25. Item 164.25, Roll Call Attendance, Ms. Hines.
Ms. Abby Mitchell.
Present.
Dr. Weaver.
Present.
Ms. Hines, present. Ms. May.
Present.
Mr. Neal.
Present.
Mr. Cox.
Present.
President Gray, absent. You have six.
Item 165.25, Recognitions and Presentations. First off, we will hear from Dr. O'Feely for the Employees of the Year.
Thank you, Dr. Weaver. All right, so it is my honor and pleasure to recognize some very special people in attendance. Before I call the Employees of the Year from the different collective bargaining groups, I do want to recognize the generous donations that we received from the different community members. And I'd like to list them for the community to understand the generosity that was displayed across this award, starting with Michigan Educational Credit Union, Game One, National Vision Administrators, Alternate Risk Management, Champions Before and After School Care, Mesa, True Credit Union, McCarthy and Smith Construction Services, the ASU Group, and Lombardo Homes. And now I would like to recognize the Employee of the Years. And we had over 50 employees across all of the collective bargaining groups that displayed commitment to excellence, hard work, and stellar job performance. And it was a very difficult decision to make, but we landed on some amazing district employees. And as I called their name, I'd ask that you please come to the front of the boardroom for a group picture and we can give an applause to everyone once they come forward. So we have Andrea Saska, elementary teacher from Stoudamire. If you're in attendance, come on forth. Kelly Rinick, secondary teacher from Stevenson, come on forth. Bobby Joe Harper, if you're in attendance, from Graham, secretary. Ann Hanke, paraprofessional from Adams, come on forth. Rachel Henzo, ancillary staff member from Wildwood, come on forth. Amy Kay, food service from Roosevelt, come on forth. Jennifer Babaloo from Franklin, custodian Employee of the Year, come on forth. Judith Campbell, Transportation Employee of the Year. Katie Pruden, Support Services Employee of the Year, from Adams. Jonathan Silver, Skilled Trades Employee of the Year, from the Tech Department. Dan Calhoun, Principal Administrator of the Year, from Career Tech Center, come on. And last but not least, Ms. Kim Polakovich from the, from Central Office, come on. And at this time, can we get, oh, Kim, come on up. I would like to formally say on behalf of the district, congratulations and thank you for all that you do. Let's give them all a round of applause. And for those of you in attendance, you can feel free to leave because I know that you have a long day ahead of you tomorrow. Thank you again. Let's give them one more round of applause, everyone.
Number two, under this roll call number, is Extended COVID Learning Plan and Continuity of Service Plan Review, Ms. Polakovich.
Good evening. I believe this may be my last and final Extended COVID Learning Plan review that we do, so I'll try to make it the best. So just to remind everyone that we received some ESR funds back when we were dealing with our pandemic. So we had to create an Extended COVID Learning Plan that was adopted in August of 2020. And every six months, we are required to see if there's modifications needed to that plan. And then we also have a Continuity of Services Plan that was adopted in February of 2022. And that just ensured that the public had input on the plan, which is why we're here, that the plan is posted on the website and it's something we review every six months. So just to kind of reminder why we're here. So when we reviewed, there were no major changes and I did send the updated documents, this presentation, and our, our Continuity of Services Plan in your board packets as well. So just a reminder, our, some of our major S R three projects were updating band instruments at the middle and high school. We did a lot of summer programming the past few years. That included a Kinder Lit program, a K through eight STEM English and math program, credit recovery, and all sorts of programs like that. And we also included transportation the past few years to make sure that that wasn't a barrier for our families. We have some buildings and grounds, specifically HVAC and generators, that were in our S R three funds. Technology updates, and that is something that we're asking for the board to approve today, which were student and staff devices, backup batteries. We have backup generators, but the generators may need a battery to keep going. I'm not a tech person, but that's what I was told. So that's what we were, we put in there. Intervention programs for our students, including Amira, Read and Math 180. And then the bulk of our money, we did do some class size reductions, so elementary staffing positions from the 23-24 school year. So S R three funds need to be obligated by September 30th of 2024, which means we have to make sure that all of our orders, everything is in, and we can't do any spending for anything past September 30th unless it's something that's already been ordered. Katie Brishky and I, from the business office, did a complete internal audit of our spending because we only have till the end of this month, to make sure that we spent on our remaining funds. So we went through the, the four years and made sure that we had spent in all of our areas and we were accurate with our funds. This did take a little bit longer because of some of the accruals that took place during the summer for our elementary staffing. So we had to wait for some of the accruals to come through for that, that summer payment that our teachers got. And we had some summer school payments that still came through with staff payments and some other summer school items and bills that we were still paying. So it took us a little bit long to get through that because we wanted to make sure that we were truly allocating all of our dollars. So when that came about, we had about 1.5 million that we are asking to allocate to technology to support the students, staff, and the connectivity of our buildings. And there was also just shy of 380,000 that I put in indirect costs. Indirect costs are things that are, that come because of using the grant. So we obviously have to pay our technology team to get all of our devices ready to deploy. So we have an indirect cost for those employees that we're paying to, to complete that service for us. So it could be lighting, all of that. So it's money that we use to help with our, the functionality of, of our district and the things that we spent. Any questions on that?
Does the board have any questions or comments at this point?
I have two more things, but I'm going to move, that was ESR. So while I, I have you here, we also received some Gear Two funds. And this was a very quick turnaround. In August of 2024, M D E reallocated gear funds and those were Governor Whitmer gave some funds to districts during COVID. So on all of the money that wasn't spent was recaptured and reallocated to districts. Wayne Westland received around $180,000 that we had to obligate by September 30th. So we had a very short turnaround to do that. So back in July, we took some Open Siad kits for a science pilot. We were able to move those from general fund to gear funds. And then we have some technology items, iPad carts, Chromebook carts, and then some additional Chromebooks to support our students so that we could spend down those funds and have them obligated by the end of this month. And then lastly, we have a 23G grant, which was about 1.5 million dollars that was awarded to Wayne Westland. The bulk of our money is used at the elementary level for MTSS interventionists. So their salaries are being, most of them, not all, but most of them are being paid out of the 23G grant. The remainder are in our 31A at-risk funds. Some intervention supplies for those programs, to quotable readers, LLI intervention materials. And these are similar reporting requirements to ESR where we have to, every six months, look at our plan, update our transparency page about how we're spending our funds. So just wanted to give you an update on those three big buckets of money.
Thank you. Any board members have any questions or comments? Ms. May.
Thank you. Mrs. Polakovich, thank you so much for this presentation. Thank you for the breakdown in terms of each of the grants and the spending. I just have one follow-up question in regards to the 23G grant.
Yeah.
So right now, we have shifted salaries of MTSS interventionists into this grant. Is it the plan for next school year? Do these have to go back into the general fund?
No, we have some in 31A and some in 23G. So the plan is that we would allocate them all into 31A for next year.
And that's where they came from this year?
That's, they came from previously.
They lashed their 31A, okay.
Yep. It was just kind of a, a good stopgap that we could use the funds to help with reallocating.
Okay. And then I have one last follow-up question. Do we have any plans to do any type of after-school supports for students?
Yes, we are actually working with Hype, Maria, right? Hype was given a grant through the state of Michigan. So there was an out-of-time school grant, but Hype has actually, I've actually got funds already allocated to them to do after-school and before-school. So we're looking at doing some middle school morning activities that include some sports and activities that can help with attendance. And then some after-school and summer programs that will be run through Hype. And they, they would be direct hires through Hype, working with our students.
Are we providing transportation? Is that the plan?
No.
I'm sorry, I'm just.
No, but if, like, if we need to, that's something that we can do if we need to add that on. But right now, that is not budgeted through Hype. But the plan is for them to be in our buildings as well as at Hype and earn money from Hype so they may not have to leave the building because Hype, Hype is just kind of the fiduciary that the monies are, monies going through to hire. And they will, they will be hiring our staff and all of that and just running their programs in our buildings.
But before school?
Some before school, some after school, and some summer.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other board members wish to ask the question or comment? Seeing none, thank you, Ms. Polakovich.
Thank you. Have a great night.
Next item on the agenda is item 166.25. This is Citizens Comments on Agenda Items Only. We have two speakers tonight. If you wish to speak and have not filled out a form, if you could do that very quickly. I'm calling Kathy Stone.
Yes, I'm Kathy Stone. I'm the Secretary for the Technology Department. And I wanted to thank you for letting me speak at the Finance Committee meeting on, on September the 12th. But I have a couple of other comments I want to make. I was very nervous that night, just like tonight. So there was a lot of information that was brought and shared with you at that meeting and I know you're going to be voting on that tonight. And I just wanted to talk about the technology items. All the products, the teacher laptops, monitors, docs, the teacher audio enhancement microphones and batteries, the student Chromebooks, iPad carts, Chromebook carts, UPS battery backups, and the wireless access points, they were all carefully selected to benefit everyone in the district. They're all items that we currently use and will be needing. The purchases won't cost the district any general fund money because they're going to be paid with the two grants that Kim was talking about, the Gear Two and the ESR Three. And which, as she mentioned, expire on next Monday, 30th. So I hope the district will not miss out on this one-time opportunity to make the technology purchases, which will benefit everyone in Wayne Westland schools and put the Technology Department in the best position to be able to assist everyone. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Stone. The next person is Mrs. Sample.
Okay, then. I'm confused. Let's just put it that way. The last meeting that we had here, we talked about the budget, was shared, kind of understood it, was up on it. That's great. September 5th, the CFO resigned. On Facebook, a post letter was put out that now we have a surplus of money. September 12th, somebody comes in from RISA to help with the district in this budget, does a complete audit of it within a few weeks. I would like to know who's over the financial department right now? What is exactly going on? When can we hear more about this? Yes, I will admit, I missed the, the 12th meeting because I was up here every day looking for the flyer, didn't see it on Facebook until reading the minutes that you guys had this. So a little confused, a little upset about this. You say you're trying to be transparent and we're not getting this. This is a volatile situation. We've been working with you, we've gotten a lot of information, and I'm very pleased with what we've gotten. But within the past 30 days, things have gone out of the thing. I don't know who to trust, don't know what to trust, don't know what the district is moving forward. Almost a year ago, knee-jerk reaction was to cut 10% of staffing straight across the board. We've got solidarity here, we're all moving forward. What's going on? Are we, I don't understand any of this and I'm a good, credits must equal debits and all that stuff. I took accounting and this does not make any sense. So I would like more information. I would like this cleared up, shared up. The DEP thing, the deficit plan that we had last week or last month, I followed it, I printed it out, okay, that looks good. That doesn't make any sense to me right now. When the final budget is out, what do we have? Are we going to have the state come over? Are you guys going to do that? What's going on? None of this makes any sense. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mrs. Sample. Item 167.25, Consent Agenda. I will take a. Oh, I'm sorry. You're right. Please come up.
It's funny, we joked about it. He said, oh, I'm going to put this one over here.
I didn't put it far enough over there.
Oh, well, good evening, Wayne Westland School Board Administration, and most importantly, the people of the Wayne Westland community itself. In one of my previous speeches at a board meeting, I said, what a difference an administration can make. At that time, it was negative because the administration had seen fit to overspend and not listen to those of us who are here to help. We are definitely seeing an improvement in administration under the current Acting Superintendent as she has made some of the necessary changes in the district. What a difference an administration can make. I encourage you to stay strong as you make more difficult decisions in the near future. Now, the WWEA, Wayne Westland Education Association, after months of investigation and discussions with the district over finances, finally got through to the district that the financial department needed someone in to help out. The district cosponsored an email sent to the WWEA members, letting them know that through discussions with the negotiating team, we arrived at a more accurate picture of the district's finances. I appreciated the acknowledgement to our members at that time. The next step, however, should have been to let the Wayne Westland community in on this information. Along with fellow negotiator Tim Sullivan, I attended the September 12th School Board Finance Meeting where the district revealed that they have $32 million. Excellent. They attributed this to the errors made by the previous accountant and the fact that they had decided to use the ESR funds to cover teacher salaries, and this had gotten them through. The board and administration talked about how they had solved this with the assistance from our new accountant, Jewel Claire. Yes, definitely. Jewel accessed the accounts and found the errors quickly. The unfortunate thing was that the WWEA was not publicly acknowledged as part of the solution in assessing these errors to the family of the Wayne Westland community at that meeting. Now, we did get an air hug from Ms. Hines, but I'm not sure that the, it's understood what really happened and how important it was. I think that it is an important step in showing that you are willing to accept the help of the union and are grateful for the help. Now, I reluctantly spoke at the meeting and addressed a few items. In my talk, I did not specifically ask for a thank you for our WWEA team because I wanted the acknowledgement to come from the district without a prompt. And that's why I say I reluctantly went up to speak because I didn't want to blow it and say, hey, what about us? You know? So I wanted to give a chance for that acknowledgement. However, nobody outside of the air hug, in their final comments, recognized the WWEA's efforts in all of this to the public. And I feel that that is a very important step in restoring the trust with the WWEA. I think even more importantly, acknowledging, acknowledging the truth of how this came about will work to restore the truth, restore the trust with the Wayne Westland community as well.
Mr. Markey, your time has expired. Thank you.
Are you serious?
I'm sorry, everyone gets three minutes.
I'll finish in the second part of the things because.
That would be wonderful. Thank you. Item 167.25, the Consent Agenda. I'll entertain a motion. Is there a motion to accept the Consent Agenda? Oh, I'm sorry. This, I thought this was for the second one. Made two mistakes in one night. I'm really doing bad. Mr. Khan, please.
Thank you. I'm Steve Khan. I'm the WWEA President for the Teachers Union. I just want to let the community know and all of you know that we have been bargaining continually in good faith with the district. A positive turn has happened since the change in administration with the Superintendent. We are very thankful for the Acting Superintendent and we are very thankful for the interim CFO that is filling in from RISA. I just want to make some things clear and follow up with Kevin Markey was saying that the $32 million that the district has, we knew in March, period. Okay? The WWEA knew, okay? We knew it and we didn't tell anyone in the community, any of you in this room, we knew it, okay? We knew it, okay? They knew it, we knew it, all right? However, with that said, the $30 million loan that we took was infuriating to us, okay? I sat right here with Tanya, our Uniserve Director from MEA, and we thought about breaking the quorum and get it up here and telling you guys not to do it, okay? We didn't do it, all right? Thankfully, through the leadership of Ms. Curry, we are not going to owe any money on that. And Mr. Toko working on that, thank you. Thank you. So it's not a hit that the community is going to take, okay? And I want to let the community know that. Yeah, we took a $30 million loan, and it was on bad advice from a bad CFO, period, okay? But here we are, moving forward, and our community is not going to take a hit on that. As a product of Wayne Westland, Edison Eagles, Marshall Vikings, and John Glenn Rockets, and like all of you in this room, I love Wayne Westland, man. We provide a phenomenal education for the students that we serve. There's a reason that we work here. There's a reason that we have not jumped ship to other districts. We love our students, and we love our community, all right? And I just want to make that clear to the community, that the union, even though our contract expired August 22nd, okay? And in the past, that would be a major, 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 major issue, and it is still with the union, okay? However, with the CFO gone and a new one, Ms. Curry's leadership, and Mr. Toko, and Dr. O'Feely running bargaining, we're bargaining in good faith. We're making progress, okay? There's no need for us to have a job action yet. We are open and honest with each other. When Ms. Curry came in, the books all of a sudden became open. What do you know, okay? And so I just want to let the community know that. And that's all I want to say. Thank you. Oh, no, one more thing, sorry. But this instability within our district that had happened under the watch of the board, no offense, guys, with the former superintendent and the CFO, it created a lot of instability with our staff, okay? Lot of instability with...
Mr. Khan, your three minutes.
Our teachers and our students, and I just want to let the community know, we're moving forward. It's a new day. We're good.
Item 167.25, do I have a motion to accept?
So moved.
Moved by Hines, consent agenda.
Support.
Support by May. Are there any questions or comments? Seeing none? Roll call vote, Ms. Hines.
Ms. May?
Yes.
Mr. Neal?
Yes.
Ms. Hines, yes. Ms. Abney Mitchell?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
And Dr. Weaver?
Yes.
Motion carries six.
Thank you. Item 168.25, Board of Education Committee reports. The first up is the Policy Committee. Dr. Weaver and Ms. Hines were present. The Policy Committee reviewed proposed changes to board operating procedures and emphasized that adopted provisions must be adhered to and discussed with our attorney. Discussions focused on improving meeting order, information flow, and decision-making. A recommended financial resolution and/or timeline for budget updates was presented. Dr. O'Feely and the business department will review recommendations. Dr. Weaver and Ms. Hines divided responsibility for reviewing board bylaws and procedures. The committee discussed revisions that may be necessary with the board operation procedures and proposed a board workshop facilitated by MASB. Dr. Weaver will coordinate the next meeting with April Ostrander. Ms. Hines mentioned potential hires, and Dr. O'Feely noted positive relations with the union. The meeting was adjourned at 2:51 PM. Now, we have our Finance Committee report. Ms. May.
Thank you, Dr. Weaver. The Finance Board Workshop Meeting was held on Thursday, September 12th, 2024, beginning at 5:30 PM. Ms. May, Mrs. Abney Mitchell, Dr. Weaver, and Mr. Gray were present. Mrs. Polikovich shared information regarding the Stronger Connections grant purchase. Mr. Montaigne presented information pertaining to the purchase of a salt truck. Mrs. Samara and Mr. Beebe presented information pertaining to technology purchases. Mr. Toko shared information regarding operations and maintenance. Mrs. Claire presented a budget update, business office reports, the investment report, and the check register. There were citizen, acting superintendent, and board member comments. The meeting was adjourned at 7:53 PM.
Thank you, Ms. May.
I'm sorry, can I add one more thing?
Yes.
For those that were unable to attend that meeting, that meeting was videotaped, so it is available on YouTube, if you did not know that.
Very well, thank you. Item 169.25, Review and Approval of Business Service Items and Finance. Recommendation to approve the resolution authorizing defeesance of 2024 state aid notes. Mr. Crowley, would you come and address the board?
Good evening, Board. I'm Jim Crowley. I'm an attorney at the Miller Campbell Law Firm. Been asked to put together a resolution for your consideration. As you are aware, the board took out what's called a state aid note in August of this year, which was done through the state of Michigan's State Aid Note Program. So that closed in August. The proceeds were received by the school district, and then it was determined, as been pointed out, that there was an accounting error that was discovered, and the school district learned that they didn't need those funds. So we were called to figure out what we could do. The note, we cannot prepay, but we did sit down. We've had numerous calls with the state, and we've come up with a solution, which we're going to do, is to take the money and put it into an escrow account. The good news is the interest rates that we can access today will be equal to what we're paying on the note, so it would be almost a break-even situation. So we can avoid almost $850,000 of interest that we would have had to pay on this note. So the resolution that you've been presented tonight would authorize the district to enter into what we call an escrow agreement. The money goes into this account, it's with the US Bank through the state of Michigan, it's guaranteed, and then that will be used, it will earn interest until the maturity of the notes in July and August of 2025. Also, the resolution authorized Superintendent Curry to actually sign the escrow agreement and to transfer the funds. The plan would be, if the board approves this, would be to fund this on Wednesday of this week.
All right. Are we required to read the resolution in the minutes? Thank you, and if you would proceed to item two, Mr. Crowley.
Uh-uh, get the vote out.
Oh, okay. I had my mind sometime this afternoon when I got here, so... All right, do I have a motion to accept?
So moved.
Is there support?
Support.
Was that Ms. May I heard?
It was me.
Moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Mr. Neal.
Is the percentage on this fixed or variable?
It's a fixed rate. So the interest rates, you had two notes. There was one was 3.31, the other one was 3.33. So it's kind of complicated, but we go to the federal government, and we get, we can buy what's called state and local government securities, we buy them from them, and we can get that exact rate. So, but it's a fixed rate.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Mr. Neal.
This financial item, is it considered something that's on the emergency status? It doesn't require a second read, or we're doing it all today?
I do not believe this requires a second read.
Do we need a second read?
Okay.
We should. Raise them up.
Yes, we should have a second read. It's due Wednesday. Yes.
So that's the question I have. Dr. Weaver, I have a follow-up question.
Okay, at the pleasure of the board, would someone like to make a motion?
Well, I have a follow-up question.
I have a comment also.
Question.
Yes, so are we time-bound with this? Because I know you said the deposit would be done by Wednesday, but does that mean that we have to have a deposit by Wednesday, or are we able to do a second read?
The sooner you do it, right now, the money's in your just general fund bank account, and it's not earning a rate equal to what you're paying on the note. So I think it would be prudent to do this as soon as possible.
Okay. So then, my next question is to Chair. If this is considered a first read, and we have a meeting tomorrow night, can we vote? Because we do have a meeting scheduled for tomorrow night. So then, could we vote on this tomorrow night as a second read?
Yes.
Would that suffice for the rest of the board in terms of a first read and a second read, so that we have 24 hours at a minimum, but we're also not accruing, or not accruing, well, accruing interest, but not accruing it the way we need to accrue it?
Yeah, Wednesday's the closing date, so that timing-wise, that would work.
Okay.
All right.
I got it. Comment. So...
Yes.
If we have the second read tomorrow, are we going to have it in writing with the numbers and everything tomorrow?
So what happens is we, the school district has hired what we call a verification agent. It's an independent accounting firm, it's a CPA firm. What they do is they verify the numbers, and they'll issue a report. We're going to have final numbers tomorrow in this verification report, so that tomorrow we'll get those actual numbers.
So the board will have the actual numbers tomorrow before we vote?
Yeah, the meeting's at night.
5:30.
5:30.
Yes, yes.
Okay, and our first payment is due back on August 25, 2025?
So there's two notes you took out. There's two notes. One of them's due July of 2025, and the other's due August of 2025. But once you put this money in this escrow account, these notes are deemed to be legally de fees. They're off your books, so...
So what's the two notes?
Would you do it, just through the program with the state, you did two notes that added up to the total.
Okay, okay, so yes, okay, okay.
And they have two different maturity dates, but the key thing is that by doing this escrow agreement, legally, it's not your, it's gone, it's off your books, it's done, and you're, it's gone.
Okay, I'd just like to see something in writing just for the transparency of it all, because we have seen...
So we have preliminary numbers, but we'll...
Don't do that. Don't do that.
So we have preliminary numbers, and the verification agent will issue the report tomorrow, which I would assume is going to be identical, but we'll have that tomorrow.
I appreciate that, and thank you, Mr. Crowley.
All right, before...
Can I just say one thing?
Yes.
Yep, this is Hines. I'd say one thing. Yeah, I just want to get it moving, because last time when we moved something to a date, we couldn't even get a quorum. So like, with this being of urgency and just getting off the books, I kind of want to just, you know, pass it, because we don't want to wait, and something happens, we don't have a quorum, and now we're in trouble, like we did happen the last time.
Well, we have a scheduled meeting tomorrow.
But what if people don't make it, something happens, then...
I will not be at the meeting tomorrow. And I've already sent that message, so... Just so you know, if you're counting heads ahead of time, I won't be there.
All right. So right now, what's on the agenda is I need a motion to table this until tomorrow night. Do we have a motion?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion that we table this for a vote until tomorrow night.
By Ms. May, do we have a second?
I support.
That's supported by Ms. Abney Mitchell. Any questions or comments before we move forward with the vote to table?
I'd like to have a comment. I'm just worried about if something happens tomorrow, even though we don't have enough people to vote. I just don't want to play with that like the last time, if anything, it happened, and we don't have the votes, and I don't want to get us in a situation if the numbers aren't going to change like in a day.
Thank you. It's been moved in favor. Roll call vote, Ms. Hines.
Ms. May?
Yes.
Mr. Neal?
Yes.
Ms. Abney Mitchell?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Ms. Hines? Well, yes. Dr. Weaver?
Very well, thank you. Item two is the recommendation to approve amending the operating millage tax rates for the 24-25 school year. Mr. Crowley.
So this resolution, so at the November 5th election date, the school district voters will be asked to replace the current operating millage that's being levied in the school district. So under Prop A, which we've been under since 1994, we have a per-student foundation allowance. This year, it's $9,608. But in order to receive that full amount, the school district has to levy 18 mills on what we call non-homestead property, commercial property. This has happened with many, many districts around the state. This millage is subject to what we call the Headley rollback. It's rolled back when property values increase faster than inflation, and that's happened in this district in the last couple of years. It's surprised a lot of districts around the state, and you've gotten rolled back below 18 mills. So because of that, you won't be able to get your full $9,608 per kid. So we came to the district and advised them, say, "Hey, we can come up in November, it's the election, it's the presidential election, it's not going to cost the district anything to run the election." And we also advised that if it is approved by the voters, that it'll be effective for 2024, so we can capture that small restoration piece this year. So it's a increased revenues, about $600,000 if this all goes through. So this district approved the tax rates back in June, so what we need to do is to, if this is successful, we need to amend that to include this restoration piece. And that has to get on the tax bills by December 1. So what we're asking, we have other districts in the same position, we're asking the board to contingently approve this increase, and if the election's successful, we'll present this to the county and the local taxes assessors. The thing is, we need to get to the county after the November 5th date very quickly, because they have to print their tax bills. So this is a courtesy to the county and the local tax collectors, and so what we're asking is, assume that, or this resolution says, if this is successful on November 5th, we're going to allow the district to present that restoration and include it on the December 1 tax bill.
Thank you. Are there any comments? Ms. Abney Mitchell.
First, I want to know, did this millage make it to the ballot for November?
Yes.
Because I know it didn't make it to the primary. And so now you asking us to approve something before it's voted on?
Yes, but it's clearly stated in here that this approval is contingent on voter approval on November 5th. And it's clear, I'm telling you that that's what it says, and it's really, I want to make sure that we get to the county and get on the December 1 tax bill so you can get the money. So I have four other districts in the southeast Michigan that are doing the exact same thing.
Right.
Same resolution.
Right. Well, I don't know if you know, are aware of it, we do have a big transparency problem, and that's what's bothering me right there.
So I can tell you, it's contingent, and it's...
I believe.
I remember type, it's contingent. If this, if voters don't approve this, and again, this tax isn't on principal residences, this is on commercial property.
Right.
Okay, number one. And number two, if it doesn't pass, then this is of no effect.
Mr. Crowley, if this does not pass, how much could we stand to lose? Do you have any kind of guesstimate?
Oh, no, exactly.
Okay.
Not to the penny, but, so you're rolled back to 17.4 mills, so you're losing .6 mills, so you're approximately $600,000 every year that you're losing.
Okay, thank you. That is significant. All right, do we have a motion to accept?
So moved. I have one other, a guesstimate question.
Let's take care of this first. Do we have a second?
Support.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Ms. Abney Mitchell.
Well, my question is, what are, and it might be a question that we need at the end of, um, doing our comments, so just direct me if it is. Because what are we doing as a district to get this millage passed? I mean, I haven't seen anything advertising upset, uh, other than on the website that the millage is on the ballot. So what are we doing to make people aware of it that don't look at our website?
Thank you for the question. I think that'd be appropriate in your comments.
Okay.
At the end. All right, it's been, uh, moved in favor to accept the terms of the operating, uh, millage tax rates. Roll call vote, Ms. Hines.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Neal?
Yes.
Ms. May?
Yes.
Ms. Hines, yes, Ms. Abney Mitchell?
Yes.
Dr. Weaver?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. I'm going to make a motion from the chair on the next items. That would be items three through eleven.
No. Number three, three, eleven?
Yes.
I thought you were just going to technology one, okay.
Items three through eleven. I'm going to ask that we consider these, since we have already been apprised of what's happening with each of these, that instead of going through them, serial item, that we consider them en bloc. We consider them all together in one vote. Do I have a, I have a motion, do I have someone to second it? Very well, it dies for no second. All right, let's continue on recommendation to award construction manager contract to McCarthy and Smith.
Good evening, Board, and good evening, community. Uh, the Wayne Westland Community School District issued an RFP for a construction manager, manager on August thirteenth, two thousand twenty-four. A public bid opening was held on September third, two thousand twenty-four. Wayne Westland received three proposals. McCarthy and Smith has provided the lowest cost for services in the scope of work if the bond was to pass, and with no cost to the district should the bond, uh, proposal fail. Uh, McCarthy and Smith, uh, have worked with the district, uh, since nineteen ninety-eight. Um, they were through, uh, the nineteen ninety-eight bond, uh, the two thousand three sinking fund, the two thousand thirteen sinking fund, and the two thousand eighteen bond initiatives that we're currently finishing up now. Their continued knowledge of our buildings and support throughout the years will be beneficial to the district as we begin planning for the upcoming bond. Uh, I recommend the Board of Education award the contract for construction manager, um, for the future bond to McCarthy and Smith.
Do we have a motion to accept?
So moved.
Moved by Hines, do we have support?
Support.
Support by Mr. Cox?
Neal.
Mr. Neal. All right, roll call vote, are there any comments before we go to the roll call? Very well, roll call vote.
Ms. May?
Yes.
Mr. Neal?
Yes.
Ms. Hines, yes, Ms. Abney Mitchell?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
President Weaver?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Moving on to item four, recommendation to purchase Munetrix Early Warning System, CareSalus, and Attendant Works, Ms. Curry.
Thank you. Wayne Westland has partnered with Wayne Reesaw in a consortium with other school districts to participate in the Stronger Connections Grant targeted on attendance and or absenteeism. These resources will be utilized for the twenty-four, twenty-five, and twenty-five, twenty-six school years. I recommend that the Board of Education approve the purchase of Munetrix Early Warning System, CareSalus, and Attendant Works at a cost not to exceed a hundred and seventy-nine thousand, six hundred and sixty-four dollars. These costs will be covered by the Stronger Connections Grant.
Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Hines, do we have a second?
Support.
It is supported by Ms. May, any comments or questions?
I have a comment.
Well, you looked at me like I shouldn't have commented. Because you were speaking.
So do we have any data from last year on student attendance and, um, any behavior, um, concerns? Anything, we have that data from last year?
We do, yes.
We do?
I don't have it with me now, but we do. And, um, a thought was that Mr. Besic, Mr. Besic would come to a future board meeting and present that attendance data.
Okay, if you can, um, get that to the board, we would appreciate it.
Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, roll call vote, Ms. Hines.
Ms. Abney Mitchell?
Yes.
Ms. Hines, yes, Mr. Neal?
Yes.
Ms. May?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Dr. Weaver?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Item five, recommendation to purchase accent point, access points, Dr. O'Feely.
Thank you, Dr. Weaver. As Jacinda Samara, former Executive Director of Technology and Innovation, presented at the September twelfth, two thousand twenty-four Finance Committee Meeting, in the comp, TSG is our selected vendor partner for purchasing access points to ensure Wi-Fi functions as expected and supports classroom learning across the district. I recommend that the board approve the total amount of fifty-one thousand, two hundred and eighty dollars and sixty-five cents for additional access points to improve our Wi-Fi infrastructure. This purchase will be funded in its entirety from S R three funds and will not impact the general fund. Thank you for your consideration.
Motion to accept.
So moved.
By Hines, do we have support?
Support.
Support by Ms. Abney Mitchell. Any comments? Seeing none, roll call vote.
Ms. May? Yes, Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Neal?
Yes.
Ms. Abney Mitchell?
Yes.
Ms. Hines, yes. And, Dr. Weaver?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Uh, the next item is item six, recommendation to purchase lavalier microphone replacements, Dr. O'Feely.
As Jacinda Samara, former Executive Director of Technology and Innovation, presented at the September twelfth, two thousand twenty-four Finance Committee Meeting, the district would like to purchase microphone replacements from B S C, our original bid partner, to ensure the classroom A V will continue to function and support classroom learning across the district. Prices used to support this purchase are from the Regional Educational Media Center Association of Michigan Save and Spot Connect Purchasing Bid Lists and Programs. I recommend that the board approve the total amount of twelve thousand, eight hundred, thirteen dollars and fifty cents for microphone replacements. This purchase will be funded in its entirety from S R three funds and will not impact the general fund. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Dr. O'Feely, do we have a motion to accept?
So moved.
By Hines, do we have a second?
Support.
Support by Ms. May. Are there any questions or comments? Seeing none, we'll move to the roll call vote, Ms. Hines.
Ms. Abney Mitchell?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Neal?
Yes.
Ms. May?
Yes.
Ms. Hines, yes. Dr. Weaver?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Item seven, recommendation to purchase uninterrupted power supplies, Dr. O'Feely.
As Jacinda Samara, former Executive Director of Technology and Innovation, presented at the September twelfth, two thousand twenty-four Finance Committee Meeting, the district would like to purchase universal power supplies or backup batteries and intermediate distribution frames. Prices used to support this purchase are from the Regional Educational Media Center Association of Michigan Save and Spot Connect Purchasing Bid Lists and Programs. I recommend that the board approve the total amount of two hundred and fifty-four thousand, four hundred and forty-seven and sixty cents for power supplies or backup batteries. This purchase will be funded in its entirety from S R three funds and will not impact the general fund. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Dr. O'Feely, do we have a motion to accept?
So moved.
Moved by Hines, do we have support?
Have support.
Ms. Abney Mitchell seconds it, any questions? Seeing none, roll call vote.
Mr. Neal?
Yes.
Ms. Hines, yes, Ms. Abney Mitchell?
Yes.
Ms. May? Yes, Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Dr. Weaver?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Item eight, recommendation to approve resale of broken technology equipment, Dr. O'Feely.
As Jacinda Samara, former Executive Director of Technology and Innovation, presented at the September twelfth, two thousand twenty-four Finance Committee Meeting, K twelve tech, a techni- technology service provider, is willing to buy back our damaged and unusable devices. I recommend that the board approve the buyback option presented by K twelve tech for damaged Chromebooks. All proceeds from returned devices will return to the general fund. Thank you for your consideration.
Do we have a motion to accept?
So moved.
Moved by Hines, do we have a second?
Support.
Supported by May, are there any questions?
I have a question.
Ms. Abney Mitchell?
So this, this item right here on our September the twelfth of Finance Committee Meeting, when I asked the question about the cost, the question was that we was gonna split the, they was gonna get a percentage of the cost from the device. And when I asked the staff person, was this the only cost? And they said, yes. And then soon as Ms. May, I already knew the answer, but as soon as the page was turned, it was a two percent cost. So this is one of the things that's not being transparent to us, and it's misleading. So what I would suggest is that I feel like they double-dipping. They get money from the device, plus they get a two percent more, that's, they getting paid two times off of our used equipment. I feel like that we could use some, maybe find somebody else to sell our used equipment to. I don't know, I'm not in the business, so I don't know.
Thank you.
I guess, well, I can tell you that these are items that were no longer usable, and if we don't, uh, sell them back, we have no use for those, uh, for those products.
And what we gonna, you know, did she say, did she say what we was gonna, how much we was gonna make off of them?
We won't know till after they, um, go through the devices, but then they take two percent of whatever that's total cost is.
Right, plus they take a percentage of each device.
I think it's the tot- two percent off the total.
No.
Oh, okay.
Plus the devices. So, um, I don't know, whatever my colleagues, um, decide, I will support them.
All right.
Well, I guess, can I just do a follow-up?
Yes.
To Mrs. Abney Mitchell's question, and I don't know if you know the answer, or Mr. Beebe, or Ms. Stone, because she's in here also, sorry, material, so. Were multiple companies looked at, or was this the only company that was researched to, to sell these devices?
I will defer to Mr. Beebe, if you're able to speak to that. It was not the only company that we looked at. Thank you so much.
I was like, what is happening?
Just had to defer to my people.
Only because you got a hole on your moon.
Thank you, Mr. Beebe. All right, I need a motion to accept.
So moved.
Moved by Hines, do we have support?
Support.
Supported by May, any question or comment? Very well, uh, roll call vote, Ms. Hines.
Hines, yes, Ms. May?
Yes.
Mr. Neal?
Abstain.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Ms. Abney Mitchell?
Um, yes.
Dr. Weaver?
Yes.
So we got five of one.
I'm trusting.
Or abstain.
I'm trusting, yeah.
I'm sorry, Ms. Hines, did you vote?
Yes.
Yes.
So it's five of ones, one abstain.
Thank you. Moving on, recommendation to purchase technology carts, again, Dr. O'Feely.
As Jacinda Samara, former Executive Director of Technology and Innovation, presented at the September twelfth, two thousand twenty-four Finance Committee Meeting, the district would like to purchase nine iPad carts for middle school, twenty-nine iPad carts for elementary, and twenty Chromebook carts for middle school to support digital learning initiatives across the elementary, middle schools. Prices used to support this purchase are from the Regional Educational Media Center Association of Michigan's R E M C Save and Spot Connect Purchasing Bid Lists and Programs. I recommend that the Board of Education approve the purchase of technology carts for the amount of one hundred and forty-seven thousand, nine hundred and ninety-eight dollars and ten cents. The purchase will be funded in its entirety through the G E A, E R two and S R three funds and will not impact the general fund. Thank you for your consideration.
Very well, do we have a motion to accept?
So moved.
And I support. Any question or comment, Ms. May?
I do. So, um, I asked some questions during the September twelfth Finance Committee Meeting, and I thought that information was going to be presented this evening in regards to how these devices are expected to be used with students. And so I am going to ask Mrs. Curry to speak to that, um, so that the community understands why we are spending one point five million dollars on technology.
Sure, you know, I should have brought, I, I think to you all, you had a chart too that I shared with you for across the classrooms. It was sent in the board updates last week. But all of this technology is used directly in our classrooms. As the teachers can probably attest here, there's different learning apps, small groups, reading instruction, large group instruction, um, so devices are used in and out throughout the course of the day.
Thank you.
And just a follow-up, these devices do not go home with students?
At times, they may go home with students, so I think it just depends on the assignments and so forth. So our high schools had, go back and forth on a daily basis, but with elementary, right? They would not take them home every day, and same with middle school. However, if Jen had assignment to do, right, there could be access so that I could be able to take that home for the day and then bring it back the next day.
Okay, thank you.
So I, I have a follow-up question.
Ms. Abney Mitchell?
So, okay, because that's another thing that we also discussed at our September the twelfth meeting, that when the students had to take these devices home to do work or anything, if they don't have Wi-Fi, they not supplied with Wi-Fi. So it's no hotspots on the devices or nothing like that, so. Unfortunately, the district is not paying for that right now. They paid for it over COVID, but right now, they currently are not. So that's what we was tossed up at this on our, um, September the twelfth meeting, because, you know, to have this much money spent on these devices, and the students can't live, use them at home. So that's something that we trying to get a resolution for.
And these are specifically for the carts too, also to store the devices in, which they use in their schools and classrooms as well.
Yeah, well, I was just talking about the technology, uh, uh, together, because our question was about how much money we was following up on it. So it was a lot of back and forth about the technology, so it's not something that we just say it's spinning, spinning, because it got to be spent by the thirtieth. We asked a lot of questions, and like Ms. May said, you know, it is on YouTube if you guys want to watch it or something like that.
Thank you, Ms. Abney Mitchell, do we have a motion to accept?
I just have one thing I want to say, this is Hines. We were talking about trying to work with partnerships as well, like, you know, the Westland Library, sometimes they secure hotspots in, you know, different areas, and maybe trying to do like some type of, uh, cooperation with like an internet company, maybe they can give our students a discounted rate. So we're trying to figure out a way to help a lot of students that might not be able to afford it. So that was part of discussion as well.
All right, thank you. I should have called for the question before anyone spoke, so I'm going to do that now. Is there a motion to accept the purchase of technology carts?
So moved.
Moved by Ms. Hines, does it have a second? I second the motion. Roll call vote, Ms. Hines.
Mr. Neal?
Yes.
Ms. Hines, yes, Ms. Abney Mitchell?
Yes.
Ms. May?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Dr. Weaver?
Yes.
Motion carries.
On to item ten, recommendation to purchase student devices, Dr. O'Feely.
As Jacinda Samara, former Executive Director of Technology and Innovation, presented at the September twelfth, two thousand twenty-four Finance Committee Meeting, the district would like to purchase three thousand, five hundred 3,583 Chromebooks to support the ongoing proliferation of innovative digital learning technologies and the need to connect students, teachers, and consumers to jobs and lifelong learning. Prices used to support this purchase are from the Regional Educational Media Center Association of Michigan's Save and Spot Connect purchasing bid lists and programs. I recommend that the Board of Education approve the purchase of 3,583 Chromebooks in the amount of $863,840.96. The purchase will be funded by G E R two funds and S R three funds. There is no impact on the district's general fund. Thank you for your consideration.
Very well. Recommendation to purchase staff devices. Do we have? I'm sorry, student devices. I would like to make a motion to accept those. Do I have a second? Do we have a second?
I support.
Thank you, Ms. Abney Mitchell. Any thoughts? Ms. Hines, please.
Ms. Hines, yes. Ms. May?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Neal?
Yes.
Ms. Abney Mitchell?
Yes.
Dr. Weaver?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Item 11, recommendation to purchase staff devices. Dr. O'Feely.
As Jacinda Samara, former Executive Director of Technology and Innovation, presented at the September 12, 2024 Finance Committee Meeting, the district would like to purchase staff computing devices to build towards the vision of the Sustainable Staff Technology Initiative in alignment with the district techno- technology plan. Prices used to support this purchase are from the Regional Educational Media Center Association of Michigan's Save and Spot Connect purchasing bid lists and programs. I recommend that the board approve the total amount of $292,266.02 for staff devices. This purchase will be funded in its entirety from S R three funds and will not impact the general fund. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Do we have a motion to purchase staff devices?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Neal. Do we have support?
I support.
Ms. Abney Mitchell supports. Any comments? Hearing none. Roll call vote, Ms. Hines.
Ms. Abney Mitchell?
Yes.
Ms. Hines, yes. Ms. May?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Neal?
Yes.
Dr. Weaver?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. At this time, 170.25, there being adjournment to a closed session of the board. Do we have a motion to accept?
So moved.
So moved by Hines. Do we have support? Supported by me? All right. Do we have any comments? All right. This is, uh, uh, is this voteable?
We can't vote yet.
All right. Vote to go into closed session.
Ms. May?
Yes.
Mr. Neal?
Yes.
Ms. Hines, yes. Ms. Abney Mitchell?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Uh, Dr. Weaver?
Yes.
Motion carries.
The board is moving into closed session. We ask you to be patient with us as we conduct an item of business, and we will come back just as soon as. Audience, please come to order. I need a motion to come back into open session. I need a motion to come back into open session. Ms. Abney Mitchell, do we have a second?
Support.
Supported by Ms. May. Roll call vote.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Neal?
Yes.
Ms. May?
Yes.
Ms. Hines, yes. Ms. Abney Mitch- Mitchell?
Yes.
Dr. Weaver?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Very well. Item 172.25, we're going into review and approval of human resources. Uh, Mr. or Dr. O'Feely, please.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Weaver. I would like to make a recommendation for Mr. Adrian Edwards to become the next Assistant Principal at John Glenn and Wayne Memorial. He comes to us with a Bachelor's of Science from Illinois State University, a Master's from Wayne State University, professional teaching certificate, professional administrator certificate in elementary and secondary admin, K-12. He's had previous work experience in Inkster as a teacher, as an athletic director, Old Redford Academy as a Dean of Students, Athletic Director, Choice School Associates as an Athletic Director, Assistant Principal, and most recently comes to us from River Rouge as an Assistant Principal slash Athletic Director. At this time, I'd like to make that recommendation.
Thank you, Dr. O'Feely. Do we have a motion to accept?
So moved.
So moved by Hines. Does it have a second?
Support.
Supported by May. Roll call vote.
I have a question.
Question?
You said, can you repeat the position?
It's a .5 percent, uh, Assistant Principal position at John Glenn and Wayne Memorial. So it's a split between both schools.
Yeah, that's what I thought I heard.
Very well. It's been moved in favor. Roll call vote.
Is he here?
He's not in the conference, though.
No?
Roll call vote.
Yeah, hero.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Ms. Abney Mitchell?
Um. I support that hero.
Ms. Hines, yes. Mr. Neal?
Yes.
Ms. May?
Yes. I have a question, but yes.
Dr. Weaver?
Yes.
Motion carries.
May I ask a follow-up question?
Please.
So is this a reduction or an addition to the staffing?
I'm sorry, I don't understand the question.
So, we've never had a .5, .5 in two different schools, right? So this is something new. So is this a reduction, and then we're gonna do a .5 and a .5? So is this a reduction of a .5 FTE?
No. So this, I guess, um...
Reduction with full FTE, because they had three last year, now they have two.
Oh, I see. You're gonna come up from the previous year?
Yeah, yeah.
Yes. We do go down as, uh, an AP.
Okay.
'Cause they used to have a principal and two assistants, right?
Three.
Three.
Three assistants?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. So I thought that was gonna be at the elementary, not at the high school.
Item two.
I got a question.
Yes.
And we don't need that no more because of our student count?
Well, we did make the staffing decisions based off of a wide range of different items.
Okay.
Yeah, but we didn't know one teacher, one principal was doing two schools. Okay.
Item two, Supervisor of Special Education, Elena Gerolamo.
So I would like to make a recommendation to the Board of Education for our next Supervisor of Special Education to be Ms. Elena Gerolamo. She comes to us with a Bachelor's of Arts from the University of Michigan Dearborn in math and elementary education and language arts, a Master's of Education from the University of Michigan Dearborn in special education. She has a professional teaching cert in elementary K-5 all subjects, language arts K-8, learning disabilities in mathematics. She has a professional administrative certificate in elementary and secondary admin, K-12. She comes to us with experience from Saint Sep- Ciprin, Ciprin Elementary School as a teacher, Summit Academy as a math resource teacher, Westwood Cyber High School as an online mentor, Plymouth Canton Community Schools as a teacher consultant, and most recently from Inalber Public Schools as a secondary coordinator of compliance and support. At this time, I'd like to make a recommendation for Ms. Elena Gerolamo to be the next Supervisor of Special Education.
So moved.
Moved by Neal, supported by Hines. Any conversation? Any discussion? Very well. Roll call vote. I'm sorry, Ms. Abney Mitchell.
That's just one position, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Roll call vote, please.
Ms. May?
Yes.
Mr. Neal?
Yes.
Ms. Abney Mitchell?
Yes.
Ms. Hines, yes. Mr. Cox?
Yes.
And I don't believe Elena's here.
And Dr. Weaver?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Item three, Juliana Molnar, Supervisor of Special Education. Dr. O'Feely.
All right. I'd like to make a motion to the board, or I'm sorry, not a motion. I'd like to make a recommendation to the board for Juliana Mul- Molnar to be the next Supervisor of Special Education. She comes to us with a Bachelor's of Science from Eastern Michigan University, telecommunications and music, a Master's in occupational therapy from the University of Ohio. She also has certification as an occupational therapist and professional administrative certificate in elementary and secondary admin, K-12. She's most recently been to Levonia Public Schools as a transition facilitator, an interim director of GSRP, and an occupational therapist. At this time, I'd like to make a recommendation for Juliana Molnar to be the next Supervisor of Special Education.
So moved.
Moved by Neal, support.
Support.
Support by Hines. Roll call vote. If there is no discussion, any discussion?
One quick question. Are these by level?
Yes.
So what level is this one? Like, 'cause they just say supervisor, but they don't say the levels.
I believe, and if, uh... Juliana's elementary, um, I'm sorry, I believe Mary is elementary. Juliana's elementary. Elena is, um, high school, and then the next one is gonna be?
Middle.
Middle.
Thank you.
So everybody have to be a supervisor?
Any other comments? Seeing none. Roll call vote.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Ms. May?
Yes.
Mr. Neal?
Yes.
Ms. Hines, yes. Ms. Abney Mitchell?
Yes.
And then, Dr. Weaver?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Next item on our agenda is item four, Supervisor of Special Education, Middle School. Dr. O'Feely.
Our next Supervisor of Special Education is Ms. Mary Semenslaw. She comes to us with a Bachelor's of Science from Western Michigan University in industrial technology and history, a Master's of Arts in special education from Eastern Michigan University, and a Doctor of Education, which is, um, she's waiting on approval for her dissertation, from Concordia. She also has a professional teaching cert in cognitive impairment, history and industrial technology, and a professional administrator certificate in elementary and secondary admin. She has had professional experiences in Vicksburg Community Schools as a technology education teacher, Sylvan Learning Center and Novising Instructor, Ypsilanti Community Schools as a special education teacher slash department head, and most recently, she was a Wayne Westland Community Resource Room teacher. And at this time, I'd like to make a recommendation to the board for her to be a Supervisor of Special Education.
Is there a motion to accept?
So moved.
Mr. Neal, is there a second?
Support.
Support by May. Any discussion? Ms. Abney Mitchell.
So all three of these positions are Supervisor positions?
Correct.
Don't get me wrong, I'm for people getting paid what they, what they, what they skill level is.
Yes.
So you said these are elementary, middle, and high school Supervisors?
Correct.
At different schools?
No, across the district.
Across the district.
So they would support all elementary, all middle school, and all high school across the district.
But do everybody have to be a Supervisor?
I don't...
I just thought, I mean, you know, Supervisors come with, titles come with money. So I just thought, I mean, um, just excuse me tonight. I apologize.
No apology needed.
I apologize. I do.
Yes. Been moved in favor. Any other discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Neal?
Yes.
Hines, yes. Abney Mitchell?
Yeah, sometimes you just gotta go home and go to bed.
Cox?
Yes.
May?
Yes.
Dr. Weaver?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Very well. Ah, okay. The next human resource item, Juliet Abbott, Middle School Assistant, or Adams Middle School Assistant Principal.
Thank you, Dr. Weaver. I'd like to make a recommendation for our next Adams Assistant Principal to be Ms. Juliet Delabio Abbott. She comes to us with a Bachelor's of Science in history and theater and fine arts from Central Michigan University, a Master's in curriculum and instruction and speech from Aquinas College, and a Master's in educational administration from the University of Detroit Mercy. She also has a professional administrator certificate and a professional education certificate in history, speech, visual arts education. She was a teacher in Oak Park Schools, and most recently, an art teacher with Wayne Westland Community Schools. And at this time, I'd like to make a recommendation for Ms. Juliet Delabio Abbott to become the next Adams Assistant Principal.
Do we have a motion to accept?
So moved.
Moved by Hines. Do we have support?
Support.
Supported by May. Any questions or comments? Seeing none. Roll call vote, please.
Ms. May?
Yes.
Mr. Neal?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Ms. Hines, yes. Ms. Abney Mitchell?
Yes.
Dr. Weaver?
Yes.
Motion carries.
And we do have...
All right. Ms. Abbott, if you would, if you would come, please, to the platform and speak to us very quickly.
I know. It's past my bedtime, too. Hi, thank you so much. I'm very grateful for this. Just very quickly, on a personal, oh, dang it. It's been a long day. On a personal note, um, my grandparents lived on Forest across from the buses. Uh, my grandpa worked at the Ford plant on Michigan Avenue. Uh, my dad's first job was at the State Wayne Theater, and he said that the best class that he ever took, and he's a PhD, was typing at Wayne Memorial High School. So I'm very, very happy to be serving this community.
Thank you. Item number six, Annie Casper Stevenson Middle School Principal, Dr. O'Feely.
Thank you, Dr. Weaver. I would like to make a recommendation for Ms. Annie Casper to become our next Stevenson Principal. Annie comes to us with a Bachelor's of English in education and speech communication from Wayne State University, a Master's in English Lit from Eastern Michigan University, and a Master's in educational leadership from Concordia University. She holds a professional admin cert in elementary and secondary admin, K-12, and a professional education certificate in secondary English and speech. Um, Ms. Casper has been a English teacher for us in Wayne Westland, a English ELA intervention specialist, instructional coach, and most recently, she's been the Assistant Principal at Stevenson. At this time, I would like to make a recommendation for Annie Casper to become the next Stevenson Principal.
So moved.
Support or moved by Hines, I will support it. Any discussion? Seeing none. Roll call vote, Ms. Hines.
Ms. Abney Mitchell?
Yes.
Ms. Hines, yes. Mr. Neal?
Yes.
Ms. May?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Dr. Weaver?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Dr. Weaver, how many minutes do I have?
You have less than three, believe me.
I just wanna say thank you. I've, my entire career has been here in Wayne Westland. My entire personal educational career has been here in Wayne Westland, so I'm working on year 35 right now. I'm happy to be here. I really am. I'm excited. I, I'm, I have the best staff ever, the best students. I'm really excited about this opportunity, so thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Casper, and congratulations to all of the people that were hired tonight. Item 173.25, review and approval of board policy revisions and updates. It is in your, uh, in the back of the board book. These have been sent to your home. Is there anyone that needs these read through, or are you ready to... or are you ready to vote? All right, hearing nothing from the Board. Do we have a motion to accept?
So moved.
Moved by Heinz. Do we have a second?
I support the, um, twenty, twenty-four Board operating procedures changes.
All right, it's been moved in favor. Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote, Ms. Heinz.
Heinz, yes. Ms. May?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Neal?
Yes.
Ms. Abney Mitchell?
Yes.
Dr. Weaver?
Yes.
Motion carries, passes.
All right. Item one seven four point two-five, delegation of delegates for the Michigan Association of School Boards Delegate Assembly. We are allowed four. As I understand it, there are two of us that are going. Is anyone else planning to go?
I could be an alternate.
Are you going?
Yeah.
All right, we get four, so you'd be, all right, so we are approving, um, Vice Pres-
Where you going?
I'm sorry?
Where you going?
M A S B conference.
Okay.
Thank you.
And that's in October, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
All right, we are designating Fred Weaver, Melody Heinz, and Kimberly May to serve as delegates. Do we have a motion to accept or we don't need to vote on this? We do need to vote on it. Very well, motion to accept.
Support.
Support or by Heinz, do we have support?
Support.
Support by May. Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote, Ms. Heinz.
Mr. Neal?
Yes.
Ms. Heinz, yes. Ms. Abney Mitchell?
Yes.
Ms. May?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Dr. Weaver?
Yes.
Motion carries, six zero.
Item one seven four point two-five. We've done that, one seven five point two-five. Forgive me, it's a little late.
Okay.
This is a recommendation or a resolution to be read in fullness to our audience and the Board of Education for vote. Whereas, a resolution was proposed upon by, or acted upon by Board Member Neal on December twenty-first, two thousand twenty-three, and whereas the resolution stated that on August twenty-second, two thousand twenty-two, the Board voted to increase their stipend from thirty-two hundred and ten dollars per annum to fifty-nine hundred and eleven dollars per annum. And whereas the Board believed at that time that a healthy fund balance existed in the general fund, and whereas it was found during scrutiny of our accounts that an accounting error occurred that produced a twenty-two million dollar error to the district's favor, and whereas it was found that the Wayne Westland School District finances had always exceeded the fifteen percent guideline prescribed in the resolution of December twenty-first, two thousand twenty-three, be it resolved that the Wayne Westland Board of Education recovered-